Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the March 5th Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Yarmouth. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We're just returning from executive session. I'll open the meeting to public comments. First, Vida, you're closest to the mic. Go ahead.
And I want to run also. You might be interested to hear that last night after the meeting ended, I happened to be leaving more or less at the same time with Jim Plath. And I have to say, I accosted him, saying that I thought it was disgusting that Dennis has taken all these years, has made Yarmouth pay for all those students that were leaving from Dennis, you know, and then turning around and telling us that we didn't want to educate the children and we didn't want to pay our fair share. And I was very surprised. He said, "We're gonna do that." And then he said that he had sent a letter to that effect to Jenny Landers and that she had not distributed it. And after that, he walked off. So I'm not sure exactly where that stands, but I thought that might be of interest. The other thing at last night's meeting during the discussion on the budget, I asked at one point how many of the 39 new students coming into Yarmouth were from other districts? And Carol, she jumped in instead of Ken and said, "None." I said, "Excuse me?" I said, "Isn't that peculiar?" And then she kept saying twice, "Well, they lived here last year and they're living here this year." I still did that. I said, "You mean to tell, you mean to say they didn't live here last year and are living here now?" But anyway, it was all confusing. And I seem to remember that 39 was the number last year also. I think somebody needs to check that out, possibly. I just think, I'm going over to the subcommittee meeting, so.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. Yes. I'm sorry, there was a young lady here, a young woman. I'll recognize her first. Yes. Please identify yourself and the precinct that you're from. Thank you.
Good evening, Yarmouth Selectmen. My name is Tiffany Terranova. I'm a Dennis resident and a teacher in the D.Y. school system and a proud parent of four. Last week, parents and children attended both Yarmouth and Dennis Board of Selectmen meetings with one core message. We ask that Yarmouth Selectmen drop the suit and that Dennis Selectmen come to the table for fair resolution. I have been over to the Dennis Selectmen meeting earlier this evening and again asked them to seriously consider what the school committee, subcommittee is discussing with a new D.Y. agreement. Tonight, I come to continue the conversation because while I am not a Yarmouth taxpayer, you and I are linked together by our D.Y. community. Since the 4 through 12 regionalization, families are not defined by the towns we reside in. Our schools are together and our youth organizations are together, meaning we are all together. One of the benefits to this is that we care and we want what's fair for our friends, for our friends' parents, and for our friends' neighbors. We have a more invested interest, a more personal interest than maybe there was 10, 20 years ago. Let's not forget, too, that many of these parents grew up in one town but now reside in the other. We are one community and you all are part of that community, too. Many of you last week spoke about being a supporter of the schools, and I believe that. So in a very complex situation where it's so easy to get wrapped up in a cyclone of events and facts and figures, let's keep it simple and keep our eye on the prize. We have a need and a desire for a new school. We also have financial issues surrounding the funding of our schools. So if we could take a moment to look at first the options or plans for a new school. I'm giving something more of approximate figures because we know that these things change as time goes on. Bear with me, I'm just trying to give a simplified version. The Plan A would be that new 4 through 7.
Can I, I understand, we've had a lot of presentations.
I can then skip through this part and just go right to the end if you like.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the school committee is almost there with a new D.Y. And from what I heard at school committee meeting last night, there isn't an honest attempt to make things more financially fair for both towns. The sticky point is that the lawsuit may need to be rescinded before the towns can vote. This may or may not be true, but that seems to be where we're heading. You all may need to decide if you can extend good faith on that. So I guess tonight, I'm asking that the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen continue to come to the table for resolution. Because unfortunately, if the lawsuit is not dropped before April 11th and we lose that state funding, what might be achieved with a new D.Y. agreement could be lost. If we lose that state funding, and I do not say this as a threat, I do not come here to be confrontational at all, I just want to give also the other side. I understand that taxpayers in Yarmouth have been spending a lot of money. If we lose the state funding, it will be harder, very hard, to convince Dennis voters that there is fairness. This is that game of tit-for-tat and the game of going round and round. It's exhausting for all of us. So let's back up and let's keep it simple. Eye on the prize. Let's secure the state money for the new 4 through 7 middle school with the MSBA grant and let's get a new D.Y. agreement that is fair for the present-day standards, for your town and for my town and for all the community. Eye on the prize. We are in this together. Thank you very much for letting me speak to you tonight and thank you for all your work.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen, thank you very much for entertaining me. My name's Abe Casparian. I'm a Yarmouth Port resident and I'm full-time now here in Yarmouth Port. I come tonight only to talk about, not the issues of whether or not we need a school. That might be true. I don't have children in the school system. I'm on social security, limited income, and I pay my taxes. By the way, my taxes just went up in the community. I put some investments in my home and that's reflected in the increase of my real estate taxes. Understanding some of the issues, not completely all of them, understanding some of the issues of the new school, that there would be a tax levy that would be burdened upon the taxpayers of the community, and that's all the taxpayers, those who are parents who have children there and those who are not. We already are paying taxpayers, that is, paying for the school system that we do have A vote went out to the community. The taxpayers and the voters of the community voted. Roughly 2,000 people voted against the expenditure to build a new high school for Yarmouth. Dennis voted yes. The school committee decided to circumvent the voters' will and go ahead and pass some kind of mechanism to get the funding. I'm here tonight to support the lawsuit. And the reason I'm supporting the lawsuit, because the issue for me is not whether or not we need a new school, it's whether or not democracy can be subverted by a small group of people known as the school committee in Yarmouth, over the will of the voters who had enough time to digest it. The lawsuit is one to ensure that when voters go out to vote, that their vote counts, that it means something, that they don't have to keep relitigating the issue in another venue. The vote was done, it was complete. Your lawsuit should go forward on the premise that the voters wanted not to be a part of a tax increase to pay for a school that we may or may not need. So I am urging the Board of Select persons, I apologize, to ensure that the lawsuit goes forward. And the reason it should go forward, the simple reason, is just purely democracy. Voters voted against it, that's why we had a vote. As a matter of fact, when the voting signs were posted for that day, I thought I could go there at 9:00 in the morning and vote. I was surprised to find out that the signs did not indicate when the polls opened. They opened at 12. I was there at 9:00, so I had to re-change my schedule to go down there, but I did make a call to the town and complained. How many voters didn't go that day or did show up at 9:00 and found the doors were locked? Would the vote been larger against it? I don't know. We'll never know. But they did midday change and put up the signs on some of the doors, but not on the signs on the street. So I was very concerned about this vote. I can't afford another tax increase. I live alone, I'm on social security, and there, I think, is a number of people in Yarmouth that are in the same set of circumstances. Now, I can appreciate the teacher from Dennis and the mother from Dennis, and I don't have a problem if she'd like to increase her taxes voluntarily to offset the monies that are owed. If she wants to and anybody else that believes that they need a big school or an increase in a building size, they certainly can pay for it and increase their tax revenue by writing an additional check every month or every two months, I'm sorry, every two years to the respective communities. But to have that burden be spread upon people who are looking to retire here, like myself, I think is unfair. And that's on the money side. Again, my issue is, the vote was made, your lawsuit is to make sure that the vote stays in place. And I urge you to continue with the lawsuit.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Casparian. All right. Good evening. Tom, wait just a minute. I've been waving at Steve here for, let him stand up first and then you can come forward.
Steve Krensmann from Yarmouth Port. My issue is simple, not controversial, I hope. It seems to me, I've been up here a couple of times talking about solarizing the Lynx course in Yarmouth. My understanding is that we now have a separate membership proposed for the Bayberry course on the Lynx course with a $300 membership. We now have a way to track the costs of that Lynx course. If the Lynx course is not profitable, I hope we can go back and revisit the issue of solarizing the Lynx course, which would be, make all this money talk go away.
Valid point. Yeah, it's a valid point.
Thank you. That's it. Non-controversial. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I don't know that the golfers would feel this non-controversial. But anyways, thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Last week, I watched the meeting. Tom, you weren't here, you were on vacation. I just want to commend the board for the answer that the board members gave. I don't know if you've seen the tape.
I have. I watched it and I felt the same way, Tom. I was very pleased with the comments.
Mark, they all gave a very good response back to these people that were here opposing the lawsuit. Some of them, I think, had a little eye-opening to some of the facts that had been going on, maybe they weren't aware of. Mr. Rosenstein, who spoke pretty good, there's something that has to be clarified with his comments. This was not a district-wide vote. The only incident where we, where we have a district-wide vote is a tent meeting, where both towns get together under the tent and vote. And that's on a budget, on a budget impasse between the two towns. This was an individual town vote by both towns. And somehow, that was taken away, as our previous speaker said, it was taken away from us by merging the vote. So I'm here, I commend you for your answers last week, and I encourage you to continue with the process that's already been started with the lawsuit. One other thing I have, today I talked to a town clerk. Town meeting is coming up. And with these pressing issues, and they're pretty serious issues, a town meeting, I emphasize that only registered voters be allowed to attend town meeting. It's in the charter, it should be only registered voters. A couple of years ago, I was involved with something, we were over in Dennis. We wanted to go in to watch the town meeting, they wouldn't even let us through the door just to observe it. All right? They said they're town meeting. It is for registered voters in the charter. I checked on the old charter.
I think we, Tom, we'd have to take that under advisement. I know, we certainly can talk about it.
I know the town moderator wants to bring in all types of people.
And there's students that may want to come in for town meeting.
Point.
Excluding one body or another, it could have some negative consequences that all of us may not anticipate.
I just want to give an example. I'll remember the vote on the range at Yarmouth Port.
Right.
All right, at the cranberry bog? That was total mayhem.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a gun owner. I sit up in the back, I recognize people who are from out of town, all the gun clubs that were there, they voted.
Right.
That was a voice vote, they voted. We can't afford this this time. That's why I'm saying, only registered voters should be attending town meeting because, to be honest with you, it is a serious crime in Massachusetts to even attempt to vote when you're not a registered voter. I believe it's a felony.
Well, we can talk with the moderator as well to make sure that that's controlled.
Yeah, I think this time you would. I have no problem with town department heads.
Understand.
Okay? They have to be there to explain things, but if they want to come, they could set up a classroom and watch it on television.
Well, there is a section reserved for non-residents, non-voters. Right.
I suggested to fill today, that will all be closed. And if it has, if you have an overflow cloud, then open it and let them go in there. They did that in past years. But it just pulls out and closes, and maybe that should be closed. Maybe a classroom would be set up so they can watch the town meeting on TV. Some people might not have cable access, they have satellite in their homes, so they won't get the meetings. But that was the suggestion. Because I'm very concerned about the vote, people getting in who are not registered voters.
I think we recognize your concerns. We'll talk about it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Susan Britter and I live in West Yarmouth. Tonight, the board will consider a series of amendments to the town bylaws related to accessory dwelling units. I attended the one public meeting, one public hearing on this matter conducted by the planning board and one subsequent board meeting at which the amendments were discussed. I remain very concerned that the amendments are poorly considered, unnecessary at this time, and not supported by data by which the Board of Selectmen could make a reasonable decision. From the handful of documents provided by the Community Development Office, it appears that the stated goal of these sweeping changes is to increase the supply of available units. Yet it appears to me the amendments merely make the application process easier by relaxing or abolishing the few regulations regarding eligibility and income requirements. They do nothing to increase supply. As a matter of, as to the matter of information or data to support these changes, there is none contained in the documents. Not even anecdotal information is provided to suggest that there are administrative hurdles, income restrictions, or deed restrictions that impede the Yarmouth process. My reading of the information actually suggests that the Yarmouth program is actually working quite well. For my limited time on the Board of Zoning Appeals, I cannot reply any, cannot recall any applications being rejected. Further, in a memo to Administrator Knappik in September of 2018, housing staff recommended that no changes be made to the elderly piece of that program. The staff goes on to say that they suggest that the Affordable Accessory Program may produce more units only if the owner is allowed to choose their own tenant. I see this approach as ripe for abuse and leading to illegal apartments. There's much speculation that young adults are leaving the Cape because rental housing is too expensive. From virtually all the surveys I've reviewed, the main reason young people are leaving the Cape is lack of jobs that provide a career opportunity. Housing may be a contributing factor, but it is really the main factor. Any in-depth discussion of economic development focuses on job creation that then drives housing. The focus here seems to be solely on housing without any discussion of the complementary piece, which is job creation. There's a distinct lack of balance in determining the nature and extent of the Yarmouth housing situation. Again, as far as I can tell, there are many affordable houses in Yarmouth. What is lacking is the workforce.
Excuse me, can I ask you to wrap up?
With the ability to pay for them. Yes. I'm almost done.
Okay.
Workforce problem is not solved by stagnating the price of houses, what ultimately amounts to rent control. I just want to point out that Cape Cod Commission recently issued its lease, I'll summarize it here, its list of assessed values across the Cape, and we are at the bottom of that list as well as income. These amendments will only keep us at the bottom of that list. I have a number of questions I've submitted to Mary and her staff that I'm waiting for the answers. And these answers should be available to anyone, especially the Board of Selectmen, before you make any decision. And then lastly, referencing the Springtown meeting, that really should be focused on and dedicated to securing town improvement, town support and approval of the wastewater program, its funding, its schedule, and its administration. I don't believe we should be diverting attention to issues that are under no deadline, that are not clearly defined, or consider sweeping changes not supported by any data. With inputs from all of the residents, I think we can produce a remedy, if one is needed, that's actually balanced and well thought out.
All right. I need to ask you to, okay, thank you. Chris? Thank you.
Hi. Christine Greeley, Precinct 6. I have two things that I'd like to talk about. The first is that I would like to express my respect and support to our Board of Health for the work that they're doing on the whole issue of e-cigarettes and the whole issue of the addition of basically chemicals flavoring to them. I think that what they're doing is a strong statement on social norming. And when we talk about social norming, we're really talking about the fact that we're fighting the whole issue of everybody's doing it, it's cool, this is what we should all be doing. We've spent decades educating our youth about the dangers of smoking to have it decline to now have, in recent studies, close to 40% of students, starting as young as middle school age, vaping. They are adding nicotine into their lungs and throats, they are adding metal because of the burning of the heat that goes involved with this, and now they're also adding THC. The thoracic surgeon testified at the last Board of Health meeting about his concerns and what he's starting to see within his practice. It is an epidemic. I think that when you start talking with school districts on what's going on now, the town of Westwood will happily tell you that their high school was evacuated twice in a full fire alarm situation in recent months because of vaping. It was not a fire, it was vaping. And if you will talk to any building principal in the area, they will tell you what a nightmare it is, including a local building principal who will say they could use a full-time assistant principal to help them just with vaping issues on a daily basis. And they are finding marijuana used within this. So the idea to sit in a meeting where I watched all the businessmen come in and say, "Oh, they're losing money," or whatever, does not mean that Yarmouth cannot say, "You know what? Yeah, you can go buy it somewhere else, but our community is saying we believe in the health and safety of our citizens and in particular, our young people, and we are going to support this and we're going to change some of the social norming to, yeah, you know, no, it isn't cool, no, it isn't right, no, it's not healthy, it contains nicotine." The second issue I have is with the planning board issue on these accessory units. I am very appalled that we are moving forward with anything that would add density onto 15,000 square foot lots in this town while we have not resolved the issue of wastewater. I look around my neighborhood, basically, you are saying we are going to create a community of duplexes with this. And I think you have to be very, very careful about this because when you take a look at some of the terms and the things that they're saying in here, you don't have to be related anymore, you know, you can doing this, you can doing that. There were people who were suggesting you wouldn't need a stove in there, you could have, you know, a microwave, basically another motel unit or something for what's going on. And I got to tell you, when you live in neighborhoods where they have really small lots, this is not pretty because we're talking about parking, we're talking about sheer numbers, we're talking about traffic on our streets, but we are talking about septic systems that cannot handle this and that we have been desperately looking for such a long period of time to start to address it. I think we address the wastewater and then we can go back in and take a look at this. But we have a number of affordable housing projects coming up that certainly should be addressing some of the needs that this supposedly would address. This is too premature, too quick, and it needs a far more research and far more understanding. Also have some real concern about the placement of boats anywhere in a yard. We've had a situation in our own neighborhood where actually Hyannis Marina agreed to take a trailer off of the property, even though it could be there legally, it was just sitting out there looking awful. And there's some real concerns about where you allow stuff to randomly be left. So there are a couple of concerns, but I specifically think this is far too fast, needs far more study, and it shouldn't be brought up in a matter of months before a town meeting and particularly with the environmental issues we have right now. Thank you for your time.
Chris, before you, I know you, has your committee looked at the vaping issue and the specific question? I've read some information on the internet about the linkage between kids that are doing vaping and transition to cigarettes.
Yeah.
And which would be a reversal of the health trends that we've seen with cigarette smoking going down. And they're seeing, and you know, this is only one article, but they're seeing some linkage between an increase in smoking at a later time.
Yeah, we had had, youth smoking had dropped to about 17% and was seeing even further decline. And we're now getting figures closer to 40% of kids who have now commenced vaping. So we know it's a nightmare. We also know that you can buy like four pods. A pod is about approximately the equivalent to a pack of cigarettes. It has nicotine in it, don't kid yourself, they've now had to because the FDA forced Juul, which is a multi-billion dollar a year industry, to declare that there is nicotine in them because they were making all along like it's a safe alternative to cigarette smoking. It is not. And what the thoracic surgeon was saying the other day was that they're now looking at the effect of the heat on the metals and the kinds of things you need to do to generate the smoke and that in those, that they're finding there's metal products and that in it. We also know that with the marijuana oils, that they're putting anything they want into them in any concentration with toxins, with percentages, things like that. And I do have reports from school administrators that they have had kids having serious difficulties in school during the course of a day when they were found because they were using a pod with marijuana in school. So we've got issues going on. So the outright, we had a sale of this, you know what? So they have to go to another town to buy them. Fine, but let's have Yarmouth start to say, "We believe in the health and safety of all of our students and our adults."
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to need to move on. We're running considerably late in our schedule. And the next item on our agenda is a discussion of the D.Y. Regional School Agreement. And I'm going to ask Tracy to make some comments based on her attendance at the school committee meeting last evening. I will say, I've done a fair amount of research on what is happening across the country on regional school agreements. And it's interesting, if you look at the contention across the country between communities within a district, and the same issues exist nationwide with regard to the apportionment of costs as we've been discussing here in Yarmouth and Dennis. So as troublesome and as difficult the issues have been and time-consuming to resolve, this is not unusual based on experiences going on elsewhere. Oftentimes, across the country, the solution has been, instead of using simply student enrollment like we use here under Chapter 70 and also in the excess spending above the Chapter 70 regulations, the other parts of the country are beginning to use more property tax allocation methods for apportioning the cost. And that's something that may well come to Massachusetts. It's been recommended by the state auditor as a different approach. It would dramatically change the apportionment of costs between Yarmouth and Dennis. But I just wanted to add that, you know, we're, although this has been a very difficult situation, it's not unusual. It's an issue that is being struggled with throughout the United States. So with that, I'll ask Tracy to talk a little bit about what went on at the school committee meeting. I think we're seeing some signs of progress.
Yes. A lot of progress has happened. I'm pleased to say that the subcommittee has been working diligently over the past several weeks to come up with something. Last night was the first opportunity that they had to bring it to the full board from their subcommittee, and they spent a considerable amount of time going over the parts that are of interest. No votes were taken, but a consensus and conversation. No votes were taken, but a consensus and conversation happened and a lot of really great conversation. I was very, very happy and I'm very thankful for them and their work. And I know that there'll be a final product by town meeting. A placeholder has been put on. The budget, which Carol will be here to present, I believe on the nineteenth, has a lot to do with the potential of the new agreement. So they went over all the different assessment possibilities last night based on the agreement. They did vote a 2.53 increase and a foundation budget, which one of the key pieces in the amended agreement would be something that we've been hopeful for quite some time is predictability and stability in the peaks and spikes. So first, the foundation, which is something that Tom spoke of, was it Tom? No, I'm sorry, Vida. Vida talked about the finance committee in Dennis. The finance committee in Dennis has already told us that they would support a foundation enrollment. And the foundation enrollment is all of the students that are school-aged children that the towns are responsible to pay. So the agreement that we have in place now was created a decade ago prior to school choice and charter schools, really. So when we break down our budget, it's based on the budget is split by those students that were actually in our school building. So the foundation budget split would include the choice in charter schools, which is something that I think everybody agrees we want to pay for our students. So that's the first step. A five-year rolling average is something else that has been discussed. And so that, like I said, kind of levies the playing field. So for us, it's significant, it's a significant savings just in next year's possible assessments. The school committee and administration is before the Dennis Board of Selectmen tonight. So I guess we'll gauge from there their appetite. Unfortunately, the reality of it is any of these changes shift costs from Yarmouth to Dennis. So hopefully they'll see the value of our partnership, which is something we've talked about for a long time, but the school committee talked about it last night, too. And I think it's really important for people to understand that there is a value in our partnership and so they talked about equity. And hopefully the presentation will go well and the Board of Selectmen will support the proposed changes. And we, as a board, haven't had the opportunity to discuss them, they have not been finalized. Capital costs were discussed, again, no votes, but somewhere between, I think, thirty-six, sixty-four split to thirty-seven, sixty-two. There were three different options at the subcommittee, sixty-four, thirty-six, thirty-five, sixty-five, and sixty-two and a half and thirty-seven. So they talked about that. They didn't really come to a conclusion, but either way, it's progress for us and it's progress for the taxpayers of our town. So it'll be interesting to see what happens in the next couple of weeks. There's a lot of things that need to be cleaned up and addressed that will be... Their attorneys will have to look at it, our attorneys will have to look at it, and it will have to go to the DESE for approval. That's the Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education. So they're trying to keep it as simplified to get a fast process on that, which at times it can take some time to go through, but we're hopeful that it will be approved by them prior to town meeting. So the real question is now that they've made the commitment to put something before town meeting is how we go about doing that. How can they vote the assessments based on a proposed agreement? Right now, I think that they have to make an assessment based on what the agreement says now. So perhaps we have to put a potential agreement on the warrant prior to a budget vote or have an alternative option available, prepared for town meeting. But in any event, I think progress is being made and I'm happy to say that. And I'm very, very thankful for the school committee and the subcommittee for the work that they've put into this. So stay tuned and hopefully we'll have some good news forthcoming.
Well, I think that'll be very positive. I think we have to keep things in perspective. If the projections from the Cape Cod Commission are correct, the next twenty years will be very difficult with regard to budgets. And they'll continue to be even in the best-case scenario for the town of Yarmouth. Cape Cod Commission is projecting that the population in Dennis will shrink to about ten thousand residents. And if you think of what impact that has in terms of number of students that they will have compared to today, that's a significant reduction. It's about a twenty-five percent reduction. And they're predicting that the town of Yarmouth, and this is all because of the non-residents buying property here on the Cape and continuing to do that, and that that trend will continue over the next twenty years. They're predicting that in the town of Yarmouth, our population will go from about twenty-three thousand down to twenty-one and change. So our student population would decrease as well. So pressure will continue on our school system, not only in terms of the proportion of students between the two towns, but also with regard to meeting the challenge of a decreased enrollment because another, the drop of another three or four or five hundred students could have a significant impact on the facilities that are offered and where the students are educated and so forth. So, you know, I think we're trying to accomplish some steps that will help both towns move forward together in an amicable way to the future. But I don't think we can say that the challenges for the future will be any less than they have been. So, but I'm very pleased to hear that the school committee is making progress and I applaud their work at this point. Does anyone else on the board want to comment at this stage? Okay, we'll move forward then to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing regarding special alcohol and entertainment licenses for the Irish Country Festival.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, as you may know, last meeting, we continued this matter until this evening because there was a question whether they were going to go forward at the high school as a possible venue versus the drive-in site. I'm assuming that because you're back here tonight, these schools are no-go?
Yeah, we did, we had to do some additional research on our end because the issue was raised by the chief, Frederickson, about the traffic that the festival would generate on Twenty-Eight. And he suggested that we research D Y High School. And at that point, it was, we didn't have time to do that. So I appreciate you guys giving us a second round here. And we did do our research. And, you know, there are definitely some, I guess, hurdles that would have to be met. You know, the question was asked last week about whether you can serve alcohol on a high school premise. And we've contacted the school and basically Sandy came back and said, you can, but it would actually involve another special meeting with the school committee where they would have to give you an approval on that. So that, and then talking with the chief about our parking plan and how we explained about how the traffic would flow on Twenty-Eight because it's an all-day event and it's not going to be, you know, three thousand people coming at the same time. It would be during the course of the day that the captain, I'm sorry, the chief, Chief Frederickson has pleased with our plan and has blessed that plan that we talked to him about. So now that he's on board with having the festival at the drive-in site and we're no longer exploring or going forward with the D Y High School plan, that's why I come before you today in hopes to get the entertainment and liquor license for the event.
Okay, so why don't you start at the beginning and for those who haven't seen, well, we didn't really get into it too much, but just give us a general overview of what the show's going to be about, the dates, the times, and the kind of license and entertainment license you're applying for.
Sure. So my background is also, I've run two successful country festivals at the Marshfield Fairgrounds and also have run an Irish festival at the drive-in site last year, which we'll be doing again this coming Saturday. So I've been working with the town to try to, you know, run a few events at the site just to explore also, you know, how the land can be used. And when I talked with the people from Town Hall, they were very excited about, you know, doing other events. And I came to them with the idea of running a country festival. Now, this is a little bit of upper scale than the Irish festival because we'll have two national headliners. So we'll run on Saturday from twelve noon to ten P M. And we have a national headliner, his name is Uncle Cracker.
Uncle Cracker.
Which is known in the country world. I'm not sure how it's country, but they call it country. And then on Sunday, we have Charlie Daniels Band. And then in addition to that, we'll have music during the course of the day. So on Saturday, the hours run from twelve noon to ten P M. And then on Sunday, they run from twelve noon to eight P M. And we'll have food trucks and also like cornhole tournaments and vendors selling, you know, everything from cowboy hats to T-shirts.
Okay. You had mentioned last time, you were talking about traffic and you're talking about transporting people from off-site locations to the festival. You want to talk about that?
Absolutely, yes. So one of the, you know, the obstacles that we have, that we had to address is that, you know, when you... Do you guys have a map that I can, or do you want me to give you a copy of a map?
Sure.
Okay. So when we put the festival together along with parking, it limits our parking. So we're, in essence, when we've done the, kind of like the scale, we have about four-hundred-and-fifty parking spots on-site. Certainly not enough for our expected attendance in year one of approximately twenty-five-hundred to three thousand people. And so what we did is we've explored different things and part of that exploration involved like contacting like the Moose Lodge to see if they would give us some of the parking, which it seems like every, all the neighbors are in agreement, including the, I always screw up the name, but the Widda Museum as well. They've partnered with us as well to provide us some parking on their facility as well as a sponsor for us. But our backup, backup plan is to park at the Mattakee School. And what we would do is we would have buses that would, basically two buses that would transport people from Mattakee's to the actual drive-in site. And the other part that we're going to do is encourage people to obviously leave their cars at the hotels. And we'll have a third bus that will actually pick people up at the hotels along the way. The good news about the event is that I would say ninety percent of the people purchasing tickets, I have direct access to via email. So I can notify them ahead of time of like, you know, listen, this is the parking situation. We have limited parking. If you're not there by two o'clock, please seek these alternative lots, meaning the Mattakee School, the Moose Lodge, those are options. We'll also have signage at the front, like actually on Twenty-Eight, to make sure that people are aware of it. We'll also have people there handing out postcards to direct them so there's no bottlenecks on Twenty-Eight. I mean, one of the nice things about the drive-in site is that there is a long driveway that goes down. So I don't anticipate that we would have any like backups on Twenty-Eight. If that was the case, obviously we'll have police details and security to make sure that that gets like squashed right away. So that's, you know, obviously an obstacle that we feel that we've addressed, and I have a one pager also that I can hand out to you guys as well with that plan.
Okay. With that many people, what are you going to do about making sure that no alcoholic beverages get in the hands of people that are under twenty-one years of age?
So all of our bartenders, and that goes for the Irish Festival this weekend, everybody is tip-certified as well as our people that are going to be checking IDs. So everybody would be wearing an alcoholic bracelet. But we're very, you know, stringent about those rules and, you know, because obviously, you know, one bad thing can ruin a whole event for years and years, not only that day, but years to come. And our plan is to run this successfully in the town for, hopefully, you know, I'm looking at a three-year plan here because when you run any type of an event, you don't immediately have success in year one, you know, unless we had, you know, a bazillion-dollar advertising budget, which we don't. But, you know, it's all about word of mouth. Like, that's why I feel like, you know, this year's Irish Festival will be better than last year. But safety, obviously, to address your question, is our number one. So every person that would be purchasing alcohol will have a bracelet. The bartenders have all gone through tip-certified classes, which they know that they're responsible not only for the bracelet, but for anybody that looks potentially underage, they would check their ID as well as a backup as well.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Mark?
No.
Norm?
All set.
Tracy?
I reserve till after, if there's any public.
Yeah, I'd like to hear if there's any comment from the public first, please.
Okay, does anybody in the public want to comment either for or against this application?
Good evening, I'm Jim Saban. I'm the chair of the Drive-In Site Reutilization Committee. We look forward to this event. This is a good test of the facilities and what some of the capabilities may be. We look at it as a learning event, as this weekend will be as well. We believe that the issues with regards to parking, I think Patrick seems to be having them adequately addressed by having parking off-site as well. But most importantly, we've also just received the ability to do some improvements to the site with some funding that we've got through the Tourism Fund, thank you, sorry, that just went out of my head, to do some improvements to the site in preparation for this event. So we would like to see this move forward. We're anxious to see how this event will be greeted in the community as well. So, you know, we hear these numbers of five thousand people. I want you to realize that that's really not a lot of people considering how much you'll probably see here this weekend. So don't be scared by five thousand people. I think it's going to be straight out over a couple of days and I think we'll be able to manage this well. Patrick's done a good job with reaching out and meeting with the site plan and others to really work this thing together. So I think I'd like to see you act favorably in his request.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else?
There's a lot of comments here from the Event Review Committee.
Yep.
In terms of their recommendations.
Sure.
Are you in agreement with all of these recommendations or are there any that you're not able to achieve?
Out of all, I'm able to achieve all the recommendations that were on there. And I compliment the town as well because that was, again, going into kind of like new territory, even though we've run the Irish Festival. We appreciated everybody kind of stepping forward where we had a pre-meeting a few weeks ago with all the department heads, and that's where those comments were generated. The other thing is we plan on having a follow-up meeting once we learn that this is a go-forward. And then also keeping everybody updated on how the ticket sales are going, including the chief and the fire and all the department heads as well.
So you're amenable to changing if the number grows or, you know, your projections are off?
Absolutely, yes, yeah, no question. I mean, we've strategically have decided to cap this at four thousand this year in that range, like per day. Because, again, we don't want to, it's a learning, you know, situation as well. So we certainly would not, like, we're not going to turn around and have, I mean, fifteen thousand people at this event and everybody gets blindsided. That's not going to happen.
So at last year's Irish Fest, there was limited food. I guess I'm concerned about the food ratio. I like food, but, you know, I guess when alcohol served, you talked about the band and how you were going to identify to make sure they were over twenty-one. But what's your plan in terms of the perimeter to make sure that nobody's leaving the property with alcohol?
Correct.
That's another question I have. And then with the Moose Lodge, would they be walking on Twenty-Eight to get there or would you have a bus?
We'd have a bus.
Okay.
That would be like a strategic bus stop, we'll call it, right?
Okay. Okay.
So.
So, yeah, I guess I'm, I just worry about people after they've been drinking, we've had, you know, we've had a fatality really, right, in that particular area in recent years, and I would hate to see anybody wandering down through 28.
Right. I understand. So in regards to food, I mean, like, for example, the Irish Festival this year, we, last year we had one food vendor, and this year we have four. So that's, you know, we've added a variety from Chick-fil-A that's bringing their truck, to someone that's serving like, you know, beef stew, Irish beef stew. So we definitely have a variety this year, so we've addressed that situation. And then with the, with the Country Fest, I've already seeked out food trucks, because they have a pool, a network, and our game plan there is in the range of eight to 10 food trucks, is what we'll have.
Okay, good. And what's your perimeter scenario with security and making sure that people aren't leaving or passing it? Are you gonna have people visually being able to see? What's the whole security plan?
So we have, yes, we have a security firm that we've hired that's licensed, and they're basically, their job is to, that's, A, their number-one job is obviously to make sure that no alcohol leaves the premise. We have signs that are made that we, that we'll reuse that from the Irish Festival, the same thing. But that's key for us, is to make sure, they'll monitor all the perimeters. So when you, when you see the plan, like, it's divided into two parts, one is the festival, which is the further end, and then the parking, there'll be, there'll be a fence that's, a removable fence that goes all the way across. There'll be security guards positioned at all entrances to make sure that no alcohol leaves the premise, and all alcohol, if consumed, is on the premise. And then the other thing, which is a priority for us as too, is that, and I know it kind of like goes with the Country Fest theme, is that there'll be absolutely no tailgating as well. So all of the alcohol beverages will be consumed inside the event, and we will do everything in our power to, including notifying the police and all of our security people that there'll be no tailgating in any of the parking lots, whether it be the Matickey School, the Moose Club Lodge, or the parking lot at the Drive-In Theater as well. And that will be posted with them, they'll be notified well in advance of that as well. Some people, they kind of like, they put that hand in hand, like they go on Gillette Stadium, but this will not be that type of an atmosphere for that.
Okay. I noticed on the review, it talks about the mass gathering permit. Is that the same thing as like a crowd control person? Do you have so many people for, does this fall under the crowd control?
So that was, that comes from the Fire Department.
Yeah.
And I work with Kevin Huck on that. And so I've been in communication with him, he was at the meeting as well. So, you know, we're basically, part of that plan is to make sure that, based on the numbers, that we have proper details, proper restrooms, proper, like, in-access points, you know, things like that.
So there'll be EMTs or some type of...
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, just like this weekend, we'll have, we have an ambulance on-site and two EMTs diff from 10 o'clock in the morning on to the end of the event.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to build on a couple of Tracy's questions, in terms of security, what is your maximum attendance at any given point? You've thrown out the number 4,000, but I don't think you anticipate that all 4,000 people will be there at one time, do you?
I really don't. I think, my gut feeling, again, I, to be honest with you, if I, I wouldn't lie to you, I hope there is 4,000 people there, that would be a good thing. But realistically, the number's probably gonna be close to like 2,500.
And how many security personnel do you intend to provide with that kind of attendance?
Well, right now, the number that we have is 12.
And will they be identified with shirts, security shirts?
Security jackets, the yellow jackets marked security, festival security, the whole nine yards, so easy identifiable at the event. And we also, in our map, you notice that we also set up, like, basically the first aid station, which, you know, we'll have an ambulance there, so that'll be easy to identify, but pretty much right at the, in the heart of the festival, so that, and it is always like, you know, you know, someone that might twist an ankle or something like that, but, but all of our security personnel will be radioed as well, to include even the people that are in the satellite parking areas as well, just because, you know, just the fact that we have told people to park there, it's our responsibility to make sure that that area is safe as well.
And is the, do you anticipate a police presence? Will you have...
Oh, absolutely.
Police officers roaming the grounds on detail? I mean, I'm sure you'll have details in the street directing traffic.
Yeah, I'll be working with Lieutenant Bryant on all of the, he, at the end of the day, that's the premise, he'll base it on the numbers that we have. And if I, you know, come back and say, listen, Lieutenant, we've sold 3,000 tickets, he's gonna tell me I need X amount. They have their, their plan of what they feel is appropriate, as far as the number of details go.
I don't think we've had a brawl in this town since the days of the Cape Cod Coliseum, but, you know, the Patriots Parade is fresh in my mind, and the things that happened during that, which is why I'm kind of harping on the security, you know, when you mix alcohol and music and large groups of people, you always...
Someone down to Georgia?
No, that never creates any problems.
What could happen?
What could happen? All right.
Cali's 88 years old, he's still playing, so it's all good.
I know.
A brawl, maybe riot was the right, I don't know. Okay, I was just, you know, I'm just conscious of that component, you know, because it, in my mind, you know, that along with underage drinking and alcohol leaving the event, you know, those are probably my three biggest concerns.
Right. I hope, you know, the one thing that you did see last year when we were in the Irish Festival, that the security, I don't know if anybody had a chance to attend, but we're definitely cognizant of that, and you will see that same example this Saturday as well. So, again, my plan is to keep running this event in this town, and at the drive-in site for, after we have some good learnings for many years to come. So obviously, I just have to give you my word that we will definitely make sure that that, that is priority number one.
Yeah, I know, you know, this board has always been very pro-event like this, you know, we want to give you enough rope to hang yourself with, and hopefully you won't.
Yeah, no, I don't plan on it.
So.
That's an endorsement.
You just got VIP tickets.
Thank you.
Just one other, I guess, precaution, I think you should spend some time with your servers to make sure that they get proper methods of identification from young people. The ABCC has a list of what they consider to be acceptable forms of ID. I don't have that entire list, but I know it's a Massachusetts driver's license, a liquor identification card, a passport, and there's a couple others. Servers should realize that if they take an out-of-state ID, and assume there's gonna be out-of-state people, that that is not a safe haven if that person turns out to be under 21. If they have one of the accepted modes of identification, that's something you're gonna have to deal with, and certain risks you're gonna have to weigh and measure. But I would take a look at that, and I would suggest, and I'm not gonna comment further than what I'm telling you now, credit cards are not valid methods of identification. And I'm saying that for a reason.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have a motion?
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Make a motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Tracy?
Make a motion to approve the special alcohol and entertainment license for the Country Festival, with the provisions that have been identified by the review, and making sure that all the, all the items addressed in the Review Committee sheets are adhered to.
Second that motion.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimously approved.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Like this weekend as well.
Terrific. Good luck.
Chris, do you have the affidavit of notice?
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our review of the zoning articles in connection with the annual town meeting warrant. Have our team present? Good evening.
The whole team is present.
All right.
I'm gonna sit in the third row.
Good, Jason Derrick out already, good.
Hmm, is that good or bad? Brad, how many years you been doing this?
Chris Bowman appointed me in 1994.
1994.
That's awesome.
Okay.
Long time. Your trunk must be really full now.
Yeah.
If you ever need any history on planning board items, Brad can easily pull it from his file folder in his trunk.
25 years since it's been...
Yeah, I'm like, we have a section, you'd be like, hold on, I have a file in my trunk, I'll be right back.
We used to get pins, you know, and, you know, our company awarded little pins, you know, for 10 years of service, 15 years, 20 years of service. Not a bad thought, you know?
How do you like me to begin? Do you have, do you want me to just start?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, carry on.
We've got five or six articles, I'll, six articles in front of us, two have caused the most flak, for lack of a better term. As you know, the Planning Board has been on a winning streak since October of 2012, with hardly any pushback or feedback, and this year, wow, they like us, they really like us. So we've had letters and articles and emails, so it's been fun.
Oh, well, we only, we're sharing the fun with you.
It is. It's been fun, yes, I've seen some of it.
We don't wanna do that all by ourselves.
It's like, they send us a selectmen, like, oh, yeah, okay. Basically, Article 39 is the accessory dwelling unit that's come before us. And a little background, just to keep it quick, as you know, most of the bylaws that come before us and before you are at your behest, we work at your behest. Some come from way out beyond our borders, like Adult Entertainment Zone, or Marijuana, where it's forced upon the town because we gotta react, or something bad is going to happen, and so. Other things come before you, like the Route 28 Overlay District, and we got the Shields Building out of it, or the VCOD, or things of that ilk. This is a mishmash, Article 39's a mishmash between the two. It started up on Beacon Hill, it picked up speed through our legislation, Smart Grove, Cape Cod Young Professionals, and it landed in our laps, and we went, okay, we can do some tweaking, speaking to you and through you to the people watching at home. We've had an accessory bylaw on the books since 1988, which predates even me on the board. So it's been here a while. That being said, I think we caught a lot of people off-guard, and we brought this forward with a few tweaks in it, because I don't think they knew this existed. Long story short, we have about 60 or 70 of these apartments in town that have been created over the past three decades. And long story short, what we're going to do tonight with your blessing is not going to increase that many. And to that end, we also put a five-year sunset clause on it. But to walk through, up on the screen on my left, your right, and for those watching at home, there's a...
Fortunately, no one's tall enough to fix the...
There's a, well, Eric...
I am.
You wanna fix it?
Do you want me to try and fix it?
Thank you, Mr. Tully.
Just push it up? There you go. Will that not work? A little bit.
Maybe the screen coming down further?
It won't. I wouldn't touch it.
There you go. Just stay right there, hold it.
We're okay.
Need a matchbook.
Good, good try. As you can see on the screen, to my left, your right, if this bylaw passes, all the things listed here, all 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, I believe, my numbers are doing quickly, won't change at all. And many of these come with a lot of safeguards. To also notify Ms. Breda, who's on the board, it still has to go back through the Zoning Board of Appeals. So the butters still get a notice, they still get certified mail, they still can go before the ZBA and say, hey, I don't like this. The only difference is, is that this time, they can go for a special permit rather than a variance. So that's something we made easier. Something else we made easier on the next slide is that you've got no minimum, you've got, excuse me, back it up one sec, just, another thing we made easier is we took off the fact you have to advertise around the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You can now rent to Mr. and Mrs. Smith, who you've known for years. We've allowed some of the extra income that you make, he or she, to be allowed to be used. Somebody before used to make, thank you, Ms. Wagan, for giving us these numbers. With the increase, if, that was on the next one? Okay.
These are all the changes.
One of the changes we made, we allow somebody who makes a little more income than what would be allowed right now, for example, a person with an income of one would jump up $12,000 in eligible income, going to almost $60,000 per year to come in and to be able to rent one of these units. Trying to keep this on the fast track and not take up your time, we've made it sure that somebody has to put in a kitchen. You can't just have 150-square-foot shack out back. Ms. Wagan was very compliant on that, and you'll see that you need kitchen components. The lot size has been tweaked larger, instead of 10,000 square feet, now it has to be 15,000 square feet. And I think the biggest kick, again, besides the ZBA, is the Board of Health. If you don't have the septic flow in your system, this isn't gonna pass. And a final note to bring it back around before I take your questions, we put the five-year sunset clause on it, because we have a feeling within five years, the creeping pipes of sewers will start to make its way probably into our bonding section, and we'd like to make sure this is done with before we get to the fact where Health, Board of Health is no longer a guiding fact, it's simply regulated by septic flow.
Comments from the board? Questions?
I have, what was the planning, the Planning Board's already had their public hearing on it.
We did.
Did the Planning Board take a position?
They recommend.
We voted for it. Being completely 100% honest, I don't think anybody has a boat in the water, or whatever the term is, skin in the game.
Oh, there's the boat analogy, I get it.
I, I thought I had fun with that one, thank you. That'll be coming up. But we're doing this, again, it came as a mishmash from out beyond the town of Yarmouth, and we brought something forth that still has all the safety, but has a couple minor tweaks that says, okay, it makes it a little easier for someone to come in and build an accessory unit on his or her property. And we thought we were getting the best of both worlds for the town of Yarmouth. We're not opening the floodgates to massive building, and yet, if someone did the sniff test up in the Commonwealth and said, what about Yarmouth? Yeah, they tried, and here it is. So I think that's what we've got.
I'm sure you saw all the majority of the letters that we got in regards to that, were there any items that you felt that should be addressed? I mean, there's a significant amount of them, so I don't know if we should read them into the record, but they were probably as part of your record?
They're part of our record. I named all the people and their street that they were on, and listed their opinion on the bylaw.
Many of the same people submitted written comments to the Planning Board after the public hearing, so they went directly to the Planning Board. And then, since they knew we were coming here today, they also sent them to the Board of Selectmen.
So you've already taken them all into consideration?
We were aware of them.
Yeah, the major point is, they think there's gonna be explosion in the town, and I can't foresee an explosion in the town, given all the checkmarks he or she has to go through to build one of these. You've gotta have enough square footage, gotta have septic flow, gotta have the approval of the ZBA, you've gotta follow certain sizes, you can't have a unit that's only 150 square feet, you've gotta have a minimum size. There's a lot of checkmarks.
I think you're gonna find that maybe you get 10 to 15 units per year, I mean, simply the cost of creating an accessory dwelling unit that meets building, plumbing, and electrical codes, in addition to, you know, the septic system. If you happen to be in a certain place in town where you have the zone two, you may have to eliminate one of the bedrooms in your house in order to be able to put it into the accessory dwelling unit. I think what this was trying to do is, there's a lot of underutilized homes out there, there might be one person living in a house, and might have a spare bedroom, and it might make some sense for them to be able to create some type of an accessory unit. It would still look like a single family, it would be inside their home, but it would allow some additional options. Let's just reduce some of the restrictions with regard to the affordable, by getting rid of the deed restriction and the fair marketing, which basically means it will not be on the subsidized housing inventory. We have four affordable units now, only one of them is on the subsidized inventory.
So we don't get credit for it?
You don't get credit for it.
25% or whatever.
10%.
Correct.
I'm sorry, the 10%, the town's... I'm sorry, the 10%, the town's trying to attain, 25, oh.
Yeah, that would kill us. But it's still, we are still trying to retain its affordability by tying it back to the federal fair market rental rates, which include utilities.
And how are we going to monitor that?
It's going to be an annual certification-type process that we have right now on our units. It would be something that would go to Mary, where she would be getting some type of certification from people that they're still living in that particular house.
And no credit from the state, well, I don't know why it comes from the state. They're not trying to do much to help us out here. So I think a lot of the thing that people are fearful is that they're going to build, you know, they're going to add on, or maybe increase the density in their own neighborhoods, or, you know, create a shed that is going to turn into a unit.
The shed situation, I mean, you need to meet building code, you need to be a residential dwelling unit accordance to state regulations. So you're not going to have a shed. And I think part of the things about adding the kitchen requirements in there were to make sure that people are getting an adequate kitchen and not just a microwave. So there's a refrigeration requirement in there. We also added a requirement to setting a minimum unit size, which was not in there now, of 400 square feet.
So can they have more than one unit?
No.
Okay, it is limited to one.
And we still retain the resident, a lot of it stayed the same. It's still, you need to be property owner residency required.
What does that mean?
That means you have, the owner has to live in one of the units. You can declare which one you want to live in. One of the things that we did allow is some flexibility. I know that Eric had a comment when we went before the Affordable Housing Trust, that maybe somebody might have some, their house in a trust, and technically they don't own it, but they're still living there. Now you have the flexibility of asking the ZBA and explaining that unique circumstance to them through a special permit versus a variance.
And the last thing is, we also changed the definition of family-related as well. Today's family codes are different, so we, it's a little bit different than just somebody related by blood, though.
And that would be something, there's a definition in the bylaw, but it would also be somewhat at the discretion of the zoning board of appeals. Steve DeYoung, the chairman of the ZBA, did come to our public hearing, and he was very much in favor of the changes.
I think, did Orleans, one of the other towns just pass this? Very similar.
Brewster did one, very recently.
Did we model this after one of the other communities specifically, or is this just?
No, I think it was unique, unique to Yarmouth. We did do, we used Kyle Pettisini, our economic development coordinator, and he coordinated with all the different towns to look and see what their existing ADU bylaws were. There you go, in our little spreadsheet. And also what was being proposed, and kind of compared it. It's a little bit of a hodgepodge. I don't think any of the towns really went with the full model bylaw, which was very lenient. Out there was things by right, no restrictions to, on anything with regard to affordability or family-related. So I think we're a little bit in the middle. I think the planning board really did take into consideration of not wanting to have an explosion, because we don't have sewers. What are the impacts on our environment? Even if we're not creating too much of an increase in density, you still might be increasing the number of people, the number of flushes, so to speak, happening on an individual property. But I also don't think, because it could cost like $50,000 to create an accessory dwelling unit, there's going to be a lot of people who don't have the money, don't want to live that close to somebody else, and don't want to be a landlord. So it's not a situation where everyone's going to take advantage of this. But we only have seven affordable now, and we're trying to see what we could do to create a few more.
And as far as parking, because that was one of the other comments that I heard.
Parking remains exactly the same as what it is, is right now, which is three parking spaces for a family, and four for an affordable. Two for the main, and then two for the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, I guess, I just have a question about, why did we move the affordability index to 100%? What was the, I mean, first of all, it's area median income, which is quite a bit higher than Yarmouth to start with. You know, I think if you look at the area median income, it might be high 60s, 70s compared to Yarmouth, with, I'm talking, family, actually. And Yarmouth is quite a bit lower than that. So why, why did we have the need to go to 100% of the area median income?
Well, I remember, Mike, go ahead, yours, I remember what I was thinking, but go ahead.
Well, we had, we had a lot of public meetings, and one of the public meetings was attended by someone from the young professionals. Basically, there was a comment that a lot of people, younger people, they may have a decent income, but they also have a very high debt load, from student loans. So even though they may look as though they make a lot of income when comparing it to the median area median income, they really don't have as much usable income for a rental unit. So it was somewhat of a compromise of going to 80% to 100% to address that comment. There's a large contingency out there, and there's some people in the room here who are probably, may have a petitioned article in the future taking away a lot of these restrictions, because they would really like to see it opened up. So it's trying to have some deference to people who want to have more of these affordable units, make it more workforce-type housing, not necessarily lower-income-type housing, to accommodate, you know, people who are trying to work, young professionals.
Okay, you know, I guess I thought that the whole intent of this, to begin with, was oriented toward expanding the affordable options. And, you know, so I guess I, you know, looked at that and said, well, why are we increasing the income level? It just, you know, it just doesn't make an awful lot of sense to me, I guess, but. But I don't know how many, you know, potential units we could have out there. So.
We did take a, have Kyle call around to kind of get an idea of what the number of units other people were seeing. Some of their bylaws are somewhat new, so it was a little bit difficult. But other than Barnstable, I mean, everyone was anticipating maybe 10 units coming out of their accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Okay.
Barnstable has sewers.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If the board is inclined to recommend this to town meeting, I would like to suggest a six-month review. Or one year. I agree with Mr. Goodwin, that I don't think that we are going to see an explosion of new units come on the market. But I think that, you know, this board would at least want to, you know, review after some period of time, the amount that do come on the market, so that we can perhaps revisit the whole thing, should we feel necessary. I mean, I'm happy that there's still ZBA approval required, even though it's downgraded from a variance to a special permit. But I think that, I think that we can, we should be able to trust them to regulate it as it was intended to be regulated. But I would still like to see numbers, whether it's six months or 12 months.
So, you know, the timing on that might be, if we have sooner of a special town meeting, or the next annual town meeting where we discuss zoning articles, that we would have a review of the statistics.
We can come back before you at six months or 12 months and just give you an update. I know you're about to banish us to October, at the small children's table, but that's okay. We're not offended at all, really.
Take some pressure off, see?
I think it'll allow more people to hear your sweet melodic voice.
I miss you, Eric, I really do, sir. But we can put on our agenda that, to review something within a year and just bring you back the numbers that have been created, if this passes, the number of the change.
I'd give it a little bit of time, just, I mean, it's going to take a while to get approved by the AG's office and that type of thing. So give it like, maybe a year after that, so that we, people know it's been approved, and you can actually start using it. I just want to clarify that it's by special permit, right now. It's only if you need relief, that would have been a variance.
You're right, I did see that, I should have.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that it's special permit now and in the future.
So, yeah, you know, that's interesting that Brad brought up the point that these types of articles are going to be banished, in his words, till October. Does that mean that we will not see any, we will not have the chance to change this for a year and a half? Should.
I think it, like Kathy said, though, by the time it gets approved by the AG, it'll be 90 days after. And then they have to go through the board of appeals.
It would be a legit year, yeah.
Before we even, I think it would take.
That's just my suggestion, if the rest of the board is comfortable with. In other things of this nature, we have typically kind of negotiated some type of review for our support, so I just thought I would throw that out there.
Okay. Could you want to make that a motion?
So are we, are we going, are you suggesting a motion whether or not to recommend this to town meeting?
Correct, yes.
I'll make that motion, that we approve Article 39, with the condition that we see, we have some type of review at a time that is appropriate for the planning board and the Board of Selectmen to consider changes that might be required prior to the fall of 2020? Town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I second that, but I have a question. I just want to know if town councils reviewed this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor of approval for town meeting, then? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, going on to Article 40.
All 2020, all right. Yes. Taking notes here. This one is, was brought to us through some conversation with the ZBA. The ZBA has been having some, gas stations come before us and asking for some updates that you see around various towns and states around our wonderful world. And it took on a life of its own in a good way. So we talked to town officials, we talked to the Chamber of Commerce, we talked to Steve DeYoung and members of the ZBA, and we've come up with the signage you see before you. It is going to allow, if passed, it's going to allow community information board at the chamber offices there on the corner of 28 and.
It's just approved on Thursday night.
I said it approved by the, the town butters though, too.
No, it was approved by the ZBA as a special permit slash variance.
Okay, well, then this is just going to basically allow you to go, we're going to take care of the signage boards at the fast food drive-in sites, and allow gas stations to post the green and red numbers out on the street, and also on top of the pumps, in certain sizes, on white letters on the pumps, and green and red on the road. And we also ask for no commercial, on top, commercial space on top of the gas signage. So you're not going to have a buy two Red Bulls, get one for 30% off, while when you see your gas is going to be priced at $2.51. We figure it makes convenience for the owners of the gas stations and for the driving public.
So that doesn't prohibit them from doing their thing with the blaring advertisements coming over the loudspeakers, then?
I know, I don't like people talking to me when I get gas.
Don't either.
Go inside and buy two hot dogs.
No trade-off there, huh? It's like you're being brainwashed when you're pumping gas, I mean, you know.
So you can't go anywhere, they've got you capping.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any comments or questions on Article 40?
I just wanted to know, so that it's eight inches, which is basically, you're just replacing the old-fashioned physical thing where they can change it from the inside, and you can see it outside, like we see everywhere, but it's limited to basically like that big, right?
The numbers.
The numbers.
Right.
So on top of, you may have as many as four prices. You can have regular, medium-grade, high test, and diesel would be the most number of numbers you could see in a row.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to recommend Article 40.
Second? Give a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. Article 41, entertainment.
This one came at your behest, and it makes great sense. It's eliminating the need for special permit for outdoor entertainment, such as concerts and exhibitions, et cetera, if located in the B1 or B2 business districts, and if the entertainment accessory don't allow it or permitted use. And you had something like that just before us.
It really came from the Chamber of Commerce, who is interested in speed. Sorry, trying to give them, is trying to streamline the process for outdoor entertainment. Instead of having to go get a special permit from the ZBA, and then come for another public hearing from you guys for entertainment, they can just one-stop shop and come to you guys.
Okay.
You're never playing poker with me.
I know, I'm terrible, I'm always like, lay it out there.
Do you have any history on that, in terms of what, I mean, I know that there's been special permits that have been allowed with restrictions. I don't know, for us, I think it's easier to approve, knowing that they've really been over the specific sites. And a lot of times, we recommend it based on all the requirements, so to say, or provisions that they've put into their decision.
I think some of the unusual ones, like the Bass River Golf Course, that wouldn't be subject to this, because this is only in the B1 and B2 zoning districts. So it's like hotels and restaurants that are already there. Anything that was like a grandfathered use, that would still have to go to the ZBA, and then it would come to you after that. So unique things that are like entertainment that's in a residential zoning district, you know, it's a grandfathered use, that would still have to go get a special permit from the ZBA.
Still for a limited number, I mean, you know, people who are, already have a restaurant or a bar, and are looking for a single event to go outside, and so forth.
Exactly.
What's N3? Theatrical?
That's the concerts, yeah, concerts, dancing.
All right, any other questions on Article 41? All right, do we have a motion?
Well, I just, can you give me the planning board's vote on these articles that we're looking at?
We approved this, we recommended this unanimously.
I'll move to recommend.
Give a second, okay. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Article 42, boat storage. Another one we got some comments on.
Turned around and looked at some of the boating people on our board. We did this because it seems that the time of the building commissioner is being stretched, going from hitter and yawn, writing people up, dealing with violations that may or may not occur. As you know, right now, if you have a boat, you're supposed to put it to the side of your building or behind, and there's some issues there with topography, or other ilk. And Mark came before us and said, help. So this amendment, I'm just going to quote what we've written, would provide some flexibility by allowing for one registered boat to be stored anywhere on a residential lot, as long as it does not create traffic or fire safety issue, and adequate onsite parking still exists. And we're hoping this will alleviate his time crunch, and allow him to do other items, except going around enforcing these actions. And this one did have some comments.
Well, I have comments on this one, and I know Mark knows my position on this. I think, you know, I think this is asking for a problem. Having it registered, you know, what you, what we think of in our mind is the, got the little one that's ready to go, and sitting there for a day or two, but I see them up on things, being worked on, sitting there, huge boats that could be an eyesore for three years. Just because it's registered, that doesn't give them, I don't think that that's enough of a, enough of a, I mean, I think if they just do it and potentially leave it there. We've seen some boats around town that have sat and just decayed. And I don't think it's fair to people who have campers. I don't know why you can park your boat in front of your house, but you can't park your camper.
I see this as a slippery slope, too. I guess that was, my first reaction to it was about the same. I thought, well, you know, how far do we go, and what happens? And, you know, I was just thinking that.
I think if you had a little skiff or something, that'd be one thing. But I can see a potential for some significant-sized boats, and I feel bad for Mark, I know, he's got his hands full. There's no doubt about it. And, you know, I'm not trying to make things difficult for him, make things difficult for him, and I like it when the Planning Board works with him to try to find solutions to these issues, but I just, I have a real problem with this because I don't foresee in my mind the same thing that I think we, what we're trying to accomplish. Yeah, you got the little, like I said, the little boat ready to go, but I see boats being worked on for four years, sitting in front of your house. And I don't think it's fair to the people who spend thousands of dollars to build side driveways for their camper and have done that for their boats. Now, you're saying to one that they can do it and the other you can't.
Any comments, questions?
I'm in agreement with Tracy. I think that we've got to consider, people have to look at these boats, particularly ones that are decaying or being repaired a little bit here and a little bit there over long periods of time. It can create a real nuisance for neighboring properties, and I don't think it's fair to people who have to live in those neighborhoods and look at those kinds of visual less than attractive views from their properties.
I think if you put a, maybe a size restriction or a time limit, you know, you could do it for, you know, a week or two.
How would it be enforceable? I mean, you know, that's a-
I don't know, but, I mean, if you have a neighbor, typically Mark's not driving around, I think, looking for these things. These are neighbors that have called them, that are complaining that he has to address it, and it's an unfortunate situation.
I'm sure with a neighbor, you know, I'd certainly not going to call on a neighbor when they, you know, bring a boat over and park it for a week, but, you know, if it's there forever and it's deteriorating, that's a whole other situation, right?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, we could build that in.
How do, how do we currently treat, you know, the person who has the summer house and, you know, a 20-foot outboard that, you know, parks it, backs it into his driveway at night, uses it three, four times a week? Is that person required to park it behind the front face of the house?
They are.
Technically, and nobody does.
Except for loading or unloading.
I don't think neighbors have a problem with it on a situation like that.
Well, the problem is, is in, I don't know whether or not it's allowed, but in Dennis, you can drive down a road right up the street that is parallel to the river and see giant boats in front yards shrink-wrapped in the winter.
That's what you're going to see here.
And that's the problem. That's what you're going to see here. You know, I would rather, you know, I would rather be more lenient for, I think there's, in your language, there's, you use the terms parked or stored. You know, I think the two can be very different. I think that you could certainly allow for boats to be parked with the intent that they will be used relatively frequently during the summer months. But, you know, I would agree that to store a shrink-wrapped boat in the driveway for six, seven, eight months, or perhaps in the front yard, is probably not a great idea.
Suppose somebody gets a complaint, Mark goes out to the house, they've had the boat in the yard for six months, so they take it out the next day, then they put it in the driveway and say, "We're just parking it." That's what will happen.
Is it, is it, is it shrink-wrapped? I mean, is it-
No. But, I mean, you can interrupt a long-term situation where you have a boat out there to avoid enforcement if you want to get into those kinds of distinctions.
It's like the transient thing, when they go from one hotel room to the next one.
Yeah, similar.
Check out for one day and then come back.
Very similar.
I'd like to know if the complaints are long-term storage, Mark? Are those the bulk of the complaint? What, I'd like more specifics on the types of complaints you're getting, I guess.
We need to get Mark in the system. That's what we need.
Hi. The complaints vary, and one person from my department answered 28 violations last year for a total of just over 70 hours, including the mailing, the field to go out and investigate the claim. Whether they're long-term or not, it's, we get a call, we go address the complaint. I don't know how long the boat's been there to begin with. A lot of these people that do have boats, that bought new boats, didn't realize the bylaw wouldn't allow them to park it in their driveway. They have it on a trailer, so they have to cut down trees, they have to remove sections of their fencing. It's, you know, as Tracy said, people are putting in driveways over their landscaping that they just paid a bunch of money for, so it was just a recommendation to try to alleviate the bylaw just a little bit to allow people to store their boat when they're using it. You know, it wasn't intended to be, I don't think, my personal advice was not to allow boats to be stored there, but to be parked, to be used. People using boats and trailers are generally moving those pretty quickly, they're using them on the weekends.
So, in your experience, are the boats that you're being called for, are they being stored long-term, or are they being parked, you know, four days a week and used on weekends?
Both. We get complaints about boats that are stored properly. They're just giant boats that are covered in green tarps that people, and they're stored properly. There's nothing I can do about it.
I think perhaps the focus might be better in differentiating between parked and stored so as to not penalize the regular user and perhaps to penalize the person who thinks that he can leave on Labor Day and keep the boat in his front yard or in his driveway and come back on Memorial Day.
Would the, the language of adding a trailer, being on a trailer, would that help? Which would basically limit the size of the boat?
The boats that are being parked and being parked that are used frequently during the season, they're not on stands. They're on trailers anyway. So, I think you could, you could address the storage, you know, the, perhaps the stand component goes along with the storage, and the trailer goes along with the parking. I mean, it's, I agree, it might be tricky, but I think that, you know, this, this language is going to unfairly penalize, you know, the casual boat user.
What about the casual camper user? I mean, I was a camper user. I don't park it in front of my house. I don't want to look at my neighbor's car.
You're spiteful because you had a camper.
I'm not, but I used it every weekend, so to say, you know, I'm getting ready to use it, I don't know. I just think it's a slippery slope. I don't think it's what we want in our town. I don't-
I think, if I may, since I've got the look. I think when we were reviewing this, again, this was generated primarily from some questions that Mark had raised in terms of the amount of staff time. Primarily, honestly, they come from neighbors who have a different, have a different fight with the neighbor that has nothing to do with the boat-
Right.
-but want to find something to aggravate them. I say that very seriously, but unfortunately, that is the case. And so, we looked at it, and what we didn't want to do was make this more restrictive. What you can do now is park or store however you want to the side of your home and set back anything. No size restriction on blocks, on stanchions, on a trailer. No one's going to ask. Put a tarp on it, don't put a tarp on it. Could be whatever size you can get in there. The most that could be probably hauled over a road legitimately is probably a 35-foot boat. Most others have to be hauled out and stored right in a marina. So, we're looking at relatively smaller-sized boats, although some might say a boat that's in a 30-foot category is a large boat. So, we wanted to try to free up and make it a bit more accommodating because we are a seaside community, and people in our town have boats. That's who we are. And maybe we can look around, and you can look at your own neighbors, and I will admit a certain bias. And I do have my boat stored, not in a yard. But the, the idea was, one boat, we thought, registered, which doesn't exist now, that wording does not exist, would eliminate the boat that's sitting in the yard forever because they're not going to register it and they're not going to insure it. If they're working on it, it's a hunk of junk. Why pay a registration fee? Maybe they don't pay excise taxes. We have records of that. You have to pay an excise tax on my boat to the town every year. I get a bill from you. If you haven't paid your excise taxes and you haven't registered it, then, yep, that's not a legal storage or, and/or parking for the vessel. So, our thinking was, we're a seaside community, let's help Mark and his staff a little bit on these, on these complaints that seem to be a bit under the radar, and try to broaden the ability of our, of our, of our neighbors to store a boat. And that's where we came out. We had, we talked about footage, square, we talked about length overall and what that number might be. We can certainly add that kind of a restriction. Really, the restriction is what you can actually haul, that someone could haul over and get it into your yard in the first place. But there will be people who store one boat in their front yard. I'm not sure, I would want to look at it in my front yard, but there are people who might do that. But, again, the number of violations are nominal. I mean, they're 20 or 25. I don't think we're going to see a huge increase with this. I think it gives more flexibility and it recognizes the fact that we are a seaside community and that it provides a bit more flexibility for our residents.
All right, any other comments here, questions? You hear kind of the sense that, you know, I like Eric's comment, but at the same time, I still have the concern about that slippery slope and, you know, what we're, what we're allowing versus where we are today. So, do we have, if there are no other comments, do we have a motion?
Well, I make a motion to not recommend.
Second.
I think my suggestion, the way it stands today.
Okay.
And the problem with this is you can't make it more restrictive from town meeting floor, and putting any size restriction would do that. So, that's-
Okay.
The Planning Board wants to go back and take a look at it and then maybe come back. We're meeting tomorrow night, so-
We are. When is the Warren close?
27.
The end of the month.
We can hold it, and if you guys want to take it up, I don't know if it's already advertised, but perhaps, I mean, you don't even have to come back here. We could see the context of it and take a recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We will, I'm sure we'll sit with Mark, and we have a meeting tomorrow night, and we can take another bite of the apple. Campers are not going to be in there.
Yeah. I don't know whether it's going to, I don't know whether the feeling of the board is going to change, you know, even, even with a reconsideration at this stage.
But it, let's try it this way. If we come with, to some kind of conclusion that size matters and we have to put it, and I like your idea of storage versus parking, shame on me for not thinking about that. I work in communications, should have thought of that. But if we come to some kind of win-win situation, zoning can always be changed. We can always come back next October and change it. So-
Then I'll make the motion to not recommend.
Right now, that's fine, but I would like to keep the door open so we can bring something back.
That's always open.
Because this gentleman's, you know, time has been exacerbated, so if we can have a couple of weeks to get something, a win-win situation, we can bring it back.
The vote would be on this article and this wording.
Right.
You know, I think certainly at a future time, if you wanted to come back with different wording and a change, I think it would be appropriate at that time.
Until it's printed, when the Warren's printed, they print our recommendation. But we, even so, we could change it on town meeting floor. But the problem with zoning is always the more restrictive.
Can we tie golf into it if we bring something back? All right, all right.
Golf carts, is that a problem?
Park a golf cart, park a golf cart. Get everybody at town meeting.
All right. Those in favor of not recommending, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. That's where we stand. So, moving forward to Article 43.
Article 43 and 44 are almost bookkeeping amendments. They're cut and dry issues the town, we're doing to reword on stormwater, building heights within the VCOD. We've had some, some builders and town officials who said, "Look, can we add a few extra feet here for room for an elevator shaft or for an air conditioner?" That, something of those ilk. We thought it made good sense. Moratorium on marijuana establishments, we have to obviously get rid of that, and the definition for temporary outdoor recreation as well. Change on that.
I'll move to recommend Article 43.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question on the, sorry.
Please.
I'm going to put that on a loop. I just have a question. I just have a question.
The height beyond 50 feet, what is the current, where it's 48, in the VCA, all of them, VC2, VC3?
I'm sorry.
In this box here?
Yep. It's, it's 48 feet for 50 feet be-
What is it now?
It's 48 feet now.
We're not changing that.
But no, it's for the ancillary features like chimneys and spires and cupolas and antennas. They can go above that height, but no, be no higher than eight feet tall. It's to give people a little bit of flexibility. What we're finding is that sometimes people can't add a nice architectural detail because technically that goes over the maximum-
It's not additional habitable space.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I commend Yarmouth for not including those things in the calculation of building height because most towns do, and it's a stinker. That's just my-
All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, Article 44.
And the substitution of land repeal. I just want to get it off the books because it's already covered in another section of our bylaw. To avoid confusion with two sets of regulations and to remain flexibility in modifying the rules and regulations through public hearings, we repeal General Bylaw Number 171, and we hope you will support us on that.
I'll move to recommend Article 44.
Second.
All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
And Mark, I, you're a blue streak over there. You're talking a blue streak to us all night.
I don't know if you've noticed this, but our meetings are going to 11 o'clock.
Apparently, apparently Tracy hasn't noticed.
See you soon.
All right, thank you.
One question.
All right.
I've got to get that recorded.
We're going to Articles 11, 14, 15, and, I'm sorry, 16 and 18. And who's leading that discussion?
I'm going to lead that discussion, Mr. Chairman, and if I may, I'm not sure why these, the next two Article Review Agenda rooms are two separate ones. Perhaps we could just take the article list and just run through them in numerical order, if that would be all right with you?
That's fine.
Sure, if we have it.
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
Do we have it here in our packet?
Yes, it's right before the future agendas.
Just before the future agendas. Oh, my.
It's the table of the fullest articles.
I guess I, I guess I breezed by it.
Our packet typically goes in order of the agenda, just for-
I will, I will relay that message.
Thank you.
You won't?
It's not new.
Oh, I will. What's that?
It's not new.
Did you discover it?
Yeah, I did discover it. It's right before our, it's back here. It's not together.
All right.
Hold on.
I think I did, uh-
Where's our future agenda? Oh, did you take it out?
Oh, who knows? My gosh, at this point. No, this should be everything.
It's usually, hold on a second.
Thank you.
Is that my phone dying?
Let me have an extra coffee.
Oh, here it is.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Go fish.
Okay.
Here you go.
All right, here we are. Oh, it's just this. Oh, I thought it was something more. I was looking for something worse than substantial. All right.
Many of these are placeholders, so-
Okay.
So, in numerical order, the first one is Article 11, the collective bargaining agreements. This is past practice here in town to reserve a set amount of money to fund collective bargaining agreements that are not yet settled. We have three unions whose article, or whose agreements expire this year, the fire department, sanitation, and our, and our highway crew.
Okay. All right, are we going to have money associated with the, with that?
We do have money associated with it, and the money is, the amount is representative of what has been offered to bargaining units this past year.
Okay.
We'll recommend that from the floor.
We'd recommend that from the floor?
That's typically what we do.
That is typically-
Yeah, okay. All right, that's fine. We can move on to number 14.
Article 13 is the next one, the Special Injury Leave Indemnity Fund. This article, there is some supplemental information in your packet. It's a draft policy. Before we get to that, I'll give you a quick overview of the article. This was discussed at the Free Cash Conversation last week. This just sets aside, this creates a fund where we can move money to pay for line-of-duty related injuries in the police or fire department.
Make a motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right, fourteen. Is that the order you'd like to go in at this point?
So, fourteen, capital stabilization fund. This is, at this point, technically a placeholder, as you heard from the Capital Budget Committee last week. They are not recommending any monies to be moved to the stabilization fund. However, we wanted to include that just in case there are any particular items in the capital article that were not recommended, and then we could then move that dollar amount to the capital stabilization fund.
All right. What is the, how broad is the utilization of our capital stabilization fund? Is it something, if we decided we wanted funds set aside for a specific general purpose such as school capital, could we do that?
If it's related to capital, you can do that.
Okay. You know, I did watch the meeting last week, I concurred with, you know, I think Tracy had some questions about, you know, why we weren't seeing any capital proposals from the schools, any significant capital proposals. And, you know, I think the trap we fall into by simply saying, "Okay, well, we'll take whatever they recommend," is that we fall behind in fund allocations. And, you know, I, you know, I know there wasn't, didn't seem to be a specific discussion that I recall from last week's meeting, but it seems to me that we ought to have something moved into the fund to take care of that, so that we have the funds available to account for, and perhaps even build up over a five-year period, to a roof fund, something of that nature, rather than being faced with a calamitous, large expenditure that then has to go through some sort of override or bonding or something else. And, you know, I just, I just think that, you know, if our, I won't phrase it that way, I think we need to be, certainly with regard to the schools that are under our control, and on our dime, we need to be more assertive and with regard to funding and setting aside money for capital improvements.
I think part of the conversation last week was on really realizing what those, what those needs are, and to be able to properly plan for them. And one conversation that's happened since then, and this was with a member of the Capital Budget Committee, is perhaps there's an interest of doing an assessment of all the school assets in the town of Yarmouth to help really build out, this would be in conjunction with the regional school district, to build out what those capital needs are over a long-term period so we have a capital plan, we know what needs to be done, and we know the cost associated with it so we can properly plan for it. Perhaps that's something that could be funded with the remainder of free cash.
Well, I think, you know, I think that that's a good approach. I don't necessarily think that we have to wait for a full assessment of all the buildings. We certainly are aware of immediate needs in several buildings, and if we have the free cash available, then, or even have room within the million five of capital, and I don't think we do, based on what I heard last week, but free cash available, I would think that we would essentially be paying ourselves for the future. And, you know, we could start out with what we think is, you know, a relatively modest amount and say, "Okay, we want to build that into our capital planning for the future, but here's a startup amount that would be assigned."
The schools themselves have an article for stabilization. They have their own stabilization fund coming forward.
Right.
There's no funding for it, but they're beginning that planning themselves.
I don't know if that's what that is intended for.
Yeah, it's for, yeah.
For capital in particular?
Yeah, it's, I believe it's capital stabilization.
And that begs the question of, all right, what's the split? You know, the split on the stabilization would be whatever it is for that year.
And it's also a portion by which building it is, too.
Right, yeah. You know, I saw in the E and D list that Wixson was awarded some...
That was a credit, though, to the thing that they paid back. I looked at that, there was on the credit side.
All right, that's the question, I didn't get an answer.
Oh, well, when I looked at it, I had the same concern, why they were paying on E and D, but I think there were the certification report showed the positives and then the negatives and then the positive. I think that they got it credited back to them, that's the way I looked at that.
Okay, well, but, yeah.
But if there's an emergency, you know, one of the biggest problems is that they have mid-year emergencies, or they have in the past, and how do you plan for that? Because even our capital stabilization, you have to have approval by town meeting to expend, so it's kind of not really going to solve some issues.
We haven't been confronting, understand, you know, we haven't been confronted with those at this stage yet, but, you know, certainly, I don't, I don't know how the, I mean, small situation is not, has not been brought forward as an emergency, when you have to have pails in the hallways and things of that nature, I mean, really.
There was nothing in the request this year. But I think to Chris's point, in this particular article, I think we have to wait to see how the budget shakes out with the school assessment to know if we have anything to put anywhere.
In the capital stabilization fund?
That's not necessarily true, because we don't ever use free cash for school budget. So, if we want to establish this fund, why don't we commit to a percentage of available free cash? Seems less committal than a number.
Right.
And we could certainly take, what was free cash, is it three million this year?
Mm-hmm.
You know, what if we were to, rather than committing to a number, commit to 10% of available free cash?
I think it's appropriate to set that kind of money aside for the schools, you know, whether...
Not necessarily. This particular one isn't for the schools.
You know, even, let's say that, you know, at some point, we needed that money for a school that was shared, and we could allocate the money out on the condition that it was matched or whatever, you know.
A portion by percentage.
Right, yeah. I think, you know, I don't know if we, how would we accomplish what Eric is talking about, is that a matter of policy?
Our policy goal, when we set, when we set our policy goal for the year, I think next year, we should make an attempt to set that as our policy, that we fund a percentage of...
So, the establishment of the fund doesn't require any initial deposit. We just establish the fund, and then we take on an annual policy to commit X amount of dollars into that fund.
I'm not even sure you need to set up a fund, you just account for the appropriation into the capital stabilization, and your policy would be to reserve that amount for school level capital needs.
Right. So that we could account for it separately, it's just another column on the spreadsheet of what...
So, do we need Article fourteen?
So, again, that's just a placeholder in case a department's capital request is voted down at town meeting, that we can divert that money to the capital stabilization. We just wanted to have a place that we could, I mean, we could cut that and then just move it to the regular stabilization fund, but that's what the intent of that is there for.
Or we can wait to see until when we, when we actually consider final vote on free cash, whether we have free cash available to assign to the capitalizations fund. Although, that would come under free cash, would it not, necessarily?
It would come under the free cash.
Under the free cash, so, okay. All right.
So, we really don't need to take any action on this now?
We can just leave this on the warrant with no recommendation from you or the finance committee, so it happens day of.
Okay, well, we'll follow up with that at a later point then. So then, fifteen is the stabilization fund, I think that's, kind of falls in the same category, right?
So, stabilization fund and reviewing past warrants, while it's come from free cash as a funding source, it's been a standalone article. So this, if the board continued, wanted to move forward with a $1 million recommendation to stabilization, that's where it would be listed.
Are we creating confusion by, because, you know, we do have the free cash article, so then why are we doing this also?
Stabilization's more of a bonding, it's more of a savings. Free cash, free cash.
Because the first item in the free cash list was a million dollars to stabilization.
Right.
Right.
Correct. We put that Excel spreadsheet together to showcase both, I guess it was dual-purposed, to show the free cash, cash project recommendations, but also to show you what the total amount pulling from free cash was for different purposes.
I think the stabilization and the capital stabilization are two different.
Correct.
And I think, you know, people need to understand that, they're very different purposes.
One's a savings and one's earmarked for projects in the future, yeah.
So, fifteen, we're not asking for any appropriation out of stabilization.
Oh, not out, no, to deposit the million, right?
Right.
Fifteen would just say to deposit fifteen, $1 million in free cash to our unrestricted stabilization fund.
Right, okay.
I'll move that, or I'll move to recommend that.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right.
Next one is Tourism Preservation Fund. This is a statutory formula. There is, based on FY18 receipts, $387,000, $387,842 that would be appropriated to the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund.
Make a motion to recommend.
Second.
I have a question on that with regard to, we've had some discussion about this with regard to golf, and whether, you know, some of the funding, and I wouldn't want to do that as a surprise to any organization, the Chamber of Commerce or whatever, but, you know, whether some of that funding should be appropriated in any given situation from the Tourism Preservation Fund.
I think that's a separate issue, Greg, this is just an appropriation article, just a lump sum to the Tourism Revenue Preservation. What they do with that money is, I think, is a separate issue.
CEDC's the stewards of that.
Okay. All right, any other questions or discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
The next one is eighteen, the Annual Town Meeting Date Change. So, the Repurpose Charter Review Committee made two recommendations. One was to establish a fall town meeting that requires no bylaw or charter change. It exists on the books now, the board can call a special town meeting at any time. Council has recommended that if we were to move forward with an annual fall town meeting, that you just call it per the existing charter language. The second piece that would need to be changed, and this is the second recommendation, is to move away from Saturday to a weekday.
Okay.
Speaking with council and the clerk's office and the administration office, the recommendation would be to move the existing, the first Saturday in May, to the last Tuesday in April.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Okay, does that create any binds? You know, I'd have to look at that.
No, it actually helps us, because it gives us more of a, one of the problems that we had in the past was, we had, we had moved it previously, I think it was the second, there was some, if we had something that was going to a ballot from town meeting, the problem previously was the date was too close to actually print a ballot after town meeting that, so it's factual. So, this actually gives us more time.
All right, and so then, elections?
Other than the...
Yeah, so as I mentioned, I spoke with Phil Goddett, the clerk, and there is no conflict or issues as it relates to the annual election.
So, the elections would continue to be?
The third Tuesday in May.
In May, okay.
Supports this change? Phil didn't weigh on in his support, he said it was fine if town meeting were to be moved to this date, as it relates to his business.
All right, further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
The next one is twenty, the D-Regionalization Discussion Placeholder.
I think we should get rid of this personally.
Did we have any, didn't we have some discussion or thoughts with regard to potentially renaming that?
Yeah. What was my thought?
Well, it's...
Something to do with...
That was a good one.
Capital costs, assignment of, assignment of capital costs or...
School, allocation of school capital, something like that.
It was, it was...
Assignment of capital responsibilities.
Oh, yeah, that was a good one.
Close quote.
Right.
All right.
Good notes, Mike.
Would you like to make a motion in that regard?
I don't think we, I think we'd make it from, I don't think we have anything to make a motion on.
I think we should rename it at that early.
All right, I guess at this point, the board seems agreeable to the fact that we would not take up deregionalization, but we might substitute another thought of a similar, not of a similar nature, but of a related nature for that particular item. I think we should redesignate Article twenty as Assignment of Capital Responsibilities. Okay.
And, you know, just to clarify, the intent being that at some point in the future, we may want to approach Dennis about, you know, assuming 100% of capital responsibility for our individual town-owned buildings.
Right. Okay, I mean, and that, you know, we certainly...
That's a very loose potential, just for a...
I think that they would love it, personally.
Well, you know, and, you know, we certainly, within that article, if we chose to ask for town meeting thought or recommendations without a specific vote, you know, we might be able to do that appropriately.
I think for the public's perception, though, I think they have to understand, there's a lot of balls in the air right now.
Right, yeah.
We're just leaving the potential to have a particular discussing, should other things not work out a certain way.
Right, yep, I think that's worthwhile. Okay, everybody, we won't take a motion on this at this point, but I think we have the sense of the boards, yep.
That's great.
Okay.
And the last one is Article twenty-three, which is the Dennis Harwich and Yarmouth Clean Water Community Partnership Agreement. Conversations are ongoing with the two communities. It sounds like, based on their meeting last week, both Dennis and Harwich, I guess the general sense at this point is that we're not ready for this to be on the spring town meeting, and that it can be withdrawn at this point.
Make a motion to withdraw.
I'll second that.
Okay, I wanted to, in watching the meeting, I know there was some discussion about having the three boards approve the budget in a three-board meeting, and there was some question on the board as to what had happened in the subcommittee and why we had voted to not do that. And I'll...
We, I'm sorry.
Our subcommittee had voted not...
The whole group of all the towns?
No, our, our subcommittee had voted...
I'm just trying to figure who that consists of. You and Mark?
Myself, Mike, who else, Ken Moody, and, let's see, yep, okay, yep, and Kurt. So, it came down to, we had a fairly substantial discussion about that issue as to what the process would be. And first of all, the wastewater, I've got to make sure I have the partnership committee would come to the board, each individual board, to review the budget for the year. And so, that is part of the process. And then they would go, then they would vote on their own by two-thirds vote on their annual budget. And so, what this... And so, what this, uh, what Dennis and Harwich are asking is that a third step then would be required in a, uh, and you would need to call a meeting of all three boards of selectmen to come to a meeting in which they would make a final presentation of the budget, uh, and would require each town to approve that. And, um, you know, very honestly, I, I personally felt that that was, number one, very cumbersome, um, time-consuming, and number two, uh, would, would put at risk the operation of the, uh, the whole plant by virtue of, okay, what if, what if you get one town or two towns now voting by, um, by, by town to oppose the budget for whatever reason? And this is an operational budget. This is not a, an approval of debt. This is just the day-to-day operations budget. Then, then you've got, uh, the wastewater, uh, plant coming to a, a halt all of a sudden with, uh, because a couple of, um, you know, some unhappy parties have decided to oppose the operating budget. And I, I just felt it was so cumbersome that, and an attempt to get around the, uh, the weighted voting that was part of the, uh, the agreement by then going to a, 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 a format that was then a one-third, 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 uh, voting, um, voting, uh, weight. And, um, you know, I, I just see nothing but additional delays and, uh, contention being created by that process. You know, since the, um, partnership would have already made presentations to the boards of selectmen, and they would have had a supermajority of their membership to vote on the budget. I, I've had experience with that in, in a, um, uh, sewage treatment plant elsewhere, and, you know, it worked just fine. And, and there was a lot of, in, in my experience, a lot of contention between the parties, but the whole process worked, worked well, um, without the, the, the kind of extra control being created in, uh, by this particular provision, so. As I said, I, I, I just, I feel like it's an, an, an overreach, and, and really tying up the, the wastewater partnership in administrative details.
Conversations will continue.
So, I didn't, at this point, I guess, uh, um, do we, it's going to be taken off the agenda in any case.
We'll just withdraw it from the spring town meeting.
Okay. This was, by the way, at the same meeting where we talked about the weighting of votes. And, um, as I think you're aware, uh, there were, there had been a move, uh, by, uh, at least one of the towns to have, uh, votes taken away from Yarmouth and spread to the other towns.
I just don't think this is a productive conversation right at this moment.
No.
I think we can revisit it.
But I think they're back to the three-two-two, aren't they?
I think they're back to the three-two-two.
I think that's been kind of resolved.
Yep.
I think it's gonna be a work in progress. I think.
Yep.
I said my comments already. I believe we're the ones that answer the voters. I, I think sometimes we have to be flexible with dealing with our partners.
Yeah.
From our other communities and giving in, and that one having oversight is not something I'm willing to take my hands in about, because ultimately, we could be the water commissioners, but we're the ones who are elected and have to answer the voters for all the budgets, so.
I'm trying to envision trying to get fifteen people.
Yeah.
Plus the seven, seven-person commission.
The other, um, the other consideration was that, once this gets up and running, the actual, um, administrative costs would be relatively constant. And I think they mentioned chemicals would be a variable and a few other items, but, um, while the plant itself and getting it up and getting it built would, would be relatively complicated, the actual, um, operational aspects of it in terms of the finances would be fairly constant.
They would have already approved their own union contracts if there are unions involved, uh, you know, uh, then a lot of the expenses would be locked in.
And I guess the thinking is that, from our point of view, was that the control really would be with the appointing authority to make sure that they have the right people serving as commissioners and that they dialogue with them and let them know what their position is on, on any kind of, you know, key areas of potential disagreement, so that our commissioners would, would be acting, uh, in accordance with, with our wishes.
Okay. Well, that's gonna be, uh, removed in any case at this stage, so, uh, what's next?
Board and committee appointments. That's it for articles.
Oh, wow.
No more articles.
Okay. Board and committee appointments. Uh, we have approval of minutes for, uh, June nineteenth.
Hold on a second, I did have.
We have a motion on, um, the minutes of June nineteenth, please.
Hold on, I just have, I remember seeing something in here.
Yeah, they're here. Shall I help you?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June nineteen, uh, June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Or any none? Those, uh, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Staying.
Staying. Okay. Can we, can we set a goal of getting, you know, we're, um, nine months behind? And, uh, can we set a goal of getting, uh, two sets of minutes at each board meeting?
I will convey that to Dan.
And see if we can catch up a little bit here? Yeah. Uh, two sets would be nice. Would, uh, I think we'd start making progress. We're doing, uh, I don't know if there was a set that was approved at the last meeting, uh, where I was absent.
Two sets of minutes every, every meeting?
Every meeting, yeah, until we, uh, catch up to date.
Why don't we just vote to have Chris do the minutes, since he sits through every meeting anyway? That would be way too efficient.
I, I see body signals and say.
Who was in favor? There you go, bingo, Chris. You're gonna do it.
I'm gonna protect you on this, Chris. Uh, so let's move to the upcoming agenda. Any comments at this point on the, uh, forthcoming agenda? We have, uh, the twenty-sixth? I'm sorry, nineteenth?
Better take a nap that day.
I know, gee.
Oh, my. Word.
One thing that could come off, um,
One?
Is the, is the, one that I know of is the last item there, the Comcast License Conversation and Vote.
Yeah.
Uh, we provided you with some background material in this evening's packet. I can touch on it very briefly later on, um, this evening. I don't think there's a vote that needs to be taken at this point, so we could scrap that.
Okay.
Looking better.
That's fine.
What are ATM preparations?
Um, so that was just to have a conversation on, uh, if the board wishes to have a pre-town meeting and to just talk about kinda publicizing the.
We always should.
Talk about that this evening, like your admin items if you'd like instead.
No, no, we should have that discussion. That's fine. Uh, you know, where it appears on the agenda is unimportant, uh, but we do need to have the discussion and, uh, uh, and then, uh, typically, we have the last-minute discussion at our, uh, uh, meeting before the town meeting. But we need to go through assignments, right? Uh, that's what we wanna cover. Uh, so, uh, need to cover assignments of, of the various articles and make sure we know who's gonna do the, not only the reading, but the presenting in some cases, so that, uh, there's no confusion on that, so. All right. Uh, that's fine then. Um, I might point out, we're back on time. And, uh, individual items?
Just one question.
Yes.
I don't have any individual items.
All right.
I got the same one from last week.
What's that?
For real this time. The parade.
Oh.
We have a parade this weekend.
Yes, we do. All right. What are the arrangements here?
I'm gonna be on the ski slopes.
Don't get hurt, all right? Please.
Where are we meeting?
Um, well, we can meet here and drive back together if that's the easiest thing. That's probably how.
Sure.
The best way to do it, so we have a car at each end. There's, Chris, are you coming this year?
I'll be in Puerto Rico, unfortunately.
Unfortunately?
Working on the disaster.
But I'll, I'll be there in spirit.
All right.
And Dan, Dan will be back before you go?
Uh, no.
So, what happens in that scenario?
We can assign a point of contact for anything. I will be available at all hours for anything that arises, but we can assign, uh, someone as a, uh, as a point of contact for you for that day.
That's fine. All right. You'll work on that, so we have, we have some prior knowledge of who that might be.
I will let you know tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll let you know tomorrow morning.
Pretty busy weekend we have here in town for both of you to be gone. I'm just gonna point that out.
So, unplanned, sorry.
We'll muddle through. We'll get through.
That's right.
We'll be all right. It's just jealousy talking.
Funny story, Puerto Rico. I'll tell you after the meeting.
Oh, okay. Any of you can join me if you'd like.
So, who's joining? We got the golf carts that are, be at Bass River Sports World, and, um, we'll meet.
Yeah.
Uh, before at some point.
Yeah, I don't know how the golf cart thing is gonna work.
I'll get some get-ups for Mark. Are you gonna be there?
A Saturday? Oh, sure.
Yeah. Oh, great. All right, so I'm gonna make sure. You know I like to do the hats.
Well, I have, I have, I have a hat, so you don't need to get one for me if you're, if you're thinking of, uh, I, I have one. I don't know if anybody else. And a green jacket with my typical lime green skiing jacket.
Okay.
So, okay.
Linda sent out instructions, but if there's anything you needed, it.
Yeah, I'll go search for them. Yeah. Uh, and candy?
I think we should just talk to him the whole time we're walking.
You heard last night was candy for priority.
Yes.
It was international call.
Are we, are we bringing that, or do we have to, uh, is that a town expenditure?
We can figure out a way to pay for it if, uh, if you guys need some candy.
You have no idea. He doesn't know.
Where, where's the fund for the, what's on the table here?
We put an article on there for.
Free cash candy?
Oh, yeah. There you go.
I don't think he realizes.
I can start throwing this stuff.
Oh, yeah, I mean, this is.
You know what it's like to run out at the end, Chris?
Oh, my gosh.
Not good.
You don't have any idea. Next year, you come with us.
I will be there.
And you'll see the importance of this candy.
I'll buy the candy next year for everyone.
Buy double.
You have no idea where you're committing to.
Whatever you get, whatever you think is enough, buy double.
All right.
All right. Continue on individual items. Uh, are we, are we square now on the, we'll have some, some communication in between, I think, but, uh, Mike?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Mark?
Uh, no.
All right, fine. Um, okay. Let's move on to, uh, consent agenda.
There's a consent agenda, two items, uh, for special entertainment license. Uh, the other item that I'd call your attention to is, uh, the signing of a grant. Uh, it's in the red folder. Uh, it's great news. We received four hundred thousand dollars for our purchase and sale of the old Yankee Village, uh, motel, um, which is really great. And, uh, staff is working on finalizing that purchase and sale as we speak.
Oh, great.
Hopefully, we'll have that before you in the next week.
Excellent.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Those in favor, please say aye.
I agree.
What are we doing here? Okay. All right. Um, any other items?
I just have two, uh, things for you very quickly. Uh, one, just circling back on the Comcast negotiations.
Yes.
We are about two and a half years out from the expiration date of our existing, uh, cable license agreement. Um, by law, we need to start the, uh, negotiation ascertainment process. Uh, we need to do that before the end of May. At this point, to do that is, really frankly, just having this conversation, uh, counts as beginning the ascertainment process and collecting public input. Um, the memo in the packet, though, outlines our responsibilities and our plan moving forward. Our immediate plan is to engage with, uh, with special counsel on this effort, which we did ten years ago, and all other communities do, at which point, they'll provide you with a briefing of the process, and we'll begin a more thorough ascertainment process of collecting, uh, feedback from the community, from departments, from the board.
We had a committee last time.
So, we did have a committee last time and, and discussions with folks. Uh, this time around, the thought is, um, that that may not necessarily be needed this year, given the ability to survey electronically and collect and gather some of this data, um, digitally. Uh, and so I guess, two things, I just wanted to brief you on that. Secondly, just wanted to get any initial feedback or concerns or directions that you may have, is we move forward in identifying special counsel to assist with this effort.
Special counsel?
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I'm very happy with the letter. I think it's, I, I don't see any objection to giving the green light to get that letter out. Uh, I'm the one that has some reservations about automatically going to having a committee. We'll need to, I, I would recommend we think through thoroughly what it is we would like this committee to do. We're in a different situation right now, I think in the past. The committee was very, very helpful in sort of putting, focusing attention on some of the deficiencies of Comcast and licensing. I don't know, quite frankly, if we need to do that again, so I, I've just recommended that we go slow on that until we really think through what we wanna get out of this committee. But I do think sending a letter, getting on record right now, as is sort of required under the licensing process, makes a great deal of sense. And if we are gonna have a discussion of a committee, I would rather have a, sort of a draft charge and some real thought behind the whole idea. I'm very nervous about a knee-jerk reaction just to have another committee, although we do have a committee on the books, that, that, a cable committee that's there, that's standing. And, uh, we've had virtually no applicants, uh, to serve on it. Maybe one or two people have expressed interest in whether or not we're going to do something, but again, I think we should think through exactly what we're gonna, what we need to get out of this. So, those are my thoughts.
Okay. What do we need at this point, Chris, now?
That's great. At this point, if, you know, if I have the board's, if I have the board's blessing to just send a notice to Comcast that we will enter into negotiations with them, um, and that we'll be in touch with them as we begin the process, and that you're, uh, okay, uh, at this point with us, us, excuse me, moving forward to identify, uh, special counsel to assist with the negotiations of the matter, that would be sufficient at this point.
Okay. I think that's great. Okay.
Billy, uh, can I just ask you a question? I see Brian, Brian Sullivan's here, and I wondered if he had any updates since last night's meeting. I went over with the, yeah, well, I think it's important if.
Welcome, Brian. Get on our, uh.
Do you have any news from tonight to share? I thought you might.
We, we have, we have you on the agenda, the, item number four.
It's school agreement.
So.
I updated them from last night's meeting already.
You're up to date on last night. We met again today. And, um, gonna iron out a few more small details. Um, nothing major. We intend to bring that to the full committee on Monday, and hopefully by the conclusion of that meeting, we'll have voted on the full agreement Monday.
Okay.
Do you know how they did in Dennis at all with, um?
I went to that meeting as well. And it went as you would expect, with the usual suspects making usual comments, um, but, um, gonna be a difficult year in Dennis.
But I, I, I feel restrained optimism. Is that?
There's a lot of moving parts. Uh, it's definitely gonna hinge on what happens in Dennis. The ball's in their court. If they vote in favor of, um, regional agreement, then we're good. If they don't, then we'll know whether or not they support education. So, talk is cheap. Now it's time to pay up.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for your work on that, Brian.
Tied him up nicely.
Okay.
I did, Mr. Chairman, just did that one last item. I've been asked. I've been asked to ask the board if there's any interest in participating in an upcoming March for Meals event where meals are delivered to members, senior members of our community. It's on March twentieth.
During the day?
During the day. You can get back to me.
Okay.
Just wanted to mention that that offer is out there.
March twentieth?
Wednesday, March twentieth.
Very good.
We'll look to have staff representation as well if...
Okay.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Good time.
Oh my goodness.